Good evening, welcome to the City of West Miami, Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of June 24th, 2014. Members present are: Hibeto Gonzalez.
Here.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Here.
Diana Rio.
Present.
And Alvaro Lurido.
Right.
And myself, Joe Paz. Also present is Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director, and Jose Villalobos, City Attorney. Good evening, Board. First order of business tonight on your agenda, which is not on your agenda, but it's the swearing of Mr. Lurido as the new Planning and Zoning Board Member. Mr. Lurido, if you raise your right hand and repeat after Mr. Villalobos.
I, Alvaro Lurido.
I, Alvaro Lurido.
solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will obey the laws of the United States of America.
And I will obey the laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I will, in all respect.
That I will, in all respect.
Observe the provision of the Charter.
Observe the provision of the Charter.
And the ordinance of the City of West Miami.
And the ordinance of the City of West Miami.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Office of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Board.
Of the City of West Miami. Congratulations, sir. Would you?
Yeah, he'll sign and you'll sign. Alright, congratulations and welcome aboard. Okay, on your agenda tonight under all business, you have the minutes from the April 1st meeting? Okay, any comments on the Board regarding the minutes from April 1st, 2014? Are any motions?
No, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, on the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez.
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
I wasn't here.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Enrio.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And since you were not here.
I wasn't here.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the new business is Public Hearing Agenda Item Number One, Special Use Permit for Plan Development 2014-001, 6530 Southwest 13th Street. Applicant Jose S. Rodriguez requests a special use permit for plan development for the property at 6530 Southwest 13th Street, West Miami, Florida, 33144. The property is Zoned R2 for duplex, and the applicant is requesting to redevelop the parcel to allow a two-family, two-story attached duplex to the existing structure. We placed the ad in the Miami Herald, and 500 radius feet were mailed notices of the hearing in certified mail. It's a public hearing, so you could hear from the applicant first and then open the public hearing for her. Okay, I have a question, Mr. Pena. This, the purpose of our meeting today is for the second-story addition? Or both the second story and the, because it's already Zoned duplex? Correct. It would be to allow a duplex on the property, the single-family house on the property. Okay, and the two-story addition, right? The two-story addition is a complete separate unit that will be the duplex part of the request.
To the mic, thank you.
Do we open up the public hearing then?
If you wish to hear from him first on what he's doing.
Okay, well, go ahead, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jose Rodriguez. And he's somebody, I can't speak Spanish, which is okay for.
Mr. Pena, you can.
Yo le hago la traducción si quiere.
It's okay. Okay, prefer hablar español porque es mi primer language.
He prefers to speak in Spanish because it's his first language. You sound like you speak good English. Can you state your address, please?
Sometimes it's the first time in the front of the board. I don't have experience with that, maybe I am a little nervous, you know?
No, no, why don't you go ahead and practice? Yeah, we're all nervous.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to apply for this special permit. I want to develop a new unit in my house.
Okay, do you currently reside at this property?
Yes, it's 5,000 feet. It's quite a feat.
Do you live here at this address?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so for the record, it's his residence. Okay.
Excuse me, when you say this address, which address are you talking about?
The site address that we're hearing today, which is...
Let me make sure he understood that. Usted vive en la propiedad de 6530 de la 13 calle?
Si, yo vivo en la propiedad 6530 Southwest 13 calle.
Okay, gracias.
Alright, thank you. Yes, the site address. Any comments from the Board?
I do have a few comments.
Okay.
I briefly just looked at the plans. Is this on? And I don't see any landscaping plans. And I see four parking spaces facing the right-of-way, which is something that usually when you do have four parking spaces, I know that those are the required parking spaces, but usually when you do have that large amount of parking spaces, it becomes not so wonderful to look at because the landscaping suffers and you start, you know, filling the grass, you know, in the front. So, I would have liked to have seen some landscaping plans, some irrigation plans, to show what type of landscaping you're proposing, if it's just sod, or if it's, you know, large palm trees, you know, whatever you're showing in there. And also some irrigation, I don't see any of that.
Yeah, of course. I bring to my architect to explain more about that. He has more experience than me in this developed project.
Good afternoon, my name is Ricardo Hernandez.
Name and your address too, sir?
My address?
Yes.
I live on 450 East Second Avenue, apartment unit number 2, High Alley, Florida, 33010.
Thank you.
You are. Answering your question, why there is not proposed a landscaping plan? Because they, you only requested an architectural plan for this hearing. If you like, ask to be submitting later on a landscaping plan, we will. No, there's no problem with that. The thing is, right now in the front of the property, there is only sod, you know, there is no landscaping at all. And four parking spaces will be occupied in the center. So, we can propose, you know, to plant some trees or small shrub on the sides of the parking spaces. So, it'll be okay to plant few.
Yeah, I would like to see if that's okay. I would like to see some landscaping, you know, see what type of plant material they're planting in there. And maybe, and I don't know if this is something that could be looked at, is instead of doing four parking spaces that you approach from the road, to do one tandem parking space, so one behind the other, in the area, you know, on this side.
Good.
On this side here. I know it's more inconvenient, but then that would remove this parking space and it would allow for more green space there. So, that's something that I would like to see.
Well, we can also treat the parking space area using like a green paper, so it won't occupy, you know, it won't be like asphalt or concrete.
That's something else.
We can make it like kind of a green paper, so it wouldn't occupy, you know, the same area with concrete.
Right, I would like to see some of that option.
We can do, it won't be a problem.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a question. What material were you proposing the driveways to be constructed out of?
Well, I just proposed the area, so you will know that there is enough space to park four cars, but, you know, we were not on that, you know, we were not specifying what was going to be made of. So, but if you already told me that you need to know and have more specification about that area, we'll provide it.
That sounds good, but I don't think we should hold up the submit of the plans and all that? You can come back at a later time.
No, I would say, I would suggest do it as a condition of whatever, you know, the approval, to put in, to look at some other, some material, not just asphalt or, you know.
Alright.
Something else that provides a little bit more green space.
And also show the walkway or access from the front of the house, or the parking, the parking to the rear new proposed duplex. Show the path as well.
Some path, some way to get it to the second property, yeah, to the rear property.
And the landscaping as well.
Alright.
One, does he have a minimum required amount of landscaping?
He has the required amount of green area.
So, either way, that would be done anyway?
That's correct.
Does he have to show a landscape plan, or not?
No, that would be a condition placed upon by you.
Is that something that we could request for them to come back at a later time? Because the landscaping is not going to be installed, obviously, tomorrow. So, is that something that we can request, that they come back whenever they have, you know, maybe in a couple of months? So that we can look at?
It would be placed as part of the conditions. The next submit will be to the, excuse me, to the commission, and then the commission would have to act on your recommendation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we are complying with the square footage of.
Correct.
Of a green area. We are, the thing is, there is not much, he got two big, huge trees on the property, one in the rear and one in the front. So, that would, you know, remove the possibility of installing, you know, like big trees. So, we're talking here mostly about planting small shrubs, and, you know.
Right.
Some plant around, you know, just to make a little nice landscaping in the front of the house. But it wouldn't, you know, any big trees won't, you know, the property won't.
Correct.
The small area won't be good for it.
Are the existing trees going to be removed?
No, no, no.
They're going to be preserved?
They're going to be preserved.
And what kind of trees are they, do you know?
I guess, avocado tree on the back, and flamboyant on the front.
Ponceana. Royal ponceana in the front.
Avocada, right.
Okay.
The one in the front is going to be retained?
Yes.
Yeah, where is that, where would that be located?
On, it is, it is already on the west side of the front, you know, where, on the other side of the parking spaces, you know, on the west property line in the front.
Okay. But, yeah, but you're showing a parking space there? And then a concrete wall?
Well, it's closer to the property.
Right, because it's really close to the fence.
Right.
Actually, it's in the, right in the property line, between neighbors.
Between the two, okay. Yeah, you have a picture?
You're going to see it because it's right, right in the.
No, on the side, on the side.
Right, yeah, right there.
Okay.
You can see the shadow.
It'll be right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, it's a pretty tree.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. About what I like about the structure, it's going to have a concrete second floor.
Yeah.
Wood trusses, so it looks like it's built right. Okay, any further comments from the Board? Okay, anybody wish to make a motion then?
Could you open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we're now opening the public hearing, so any members of the public that would wish to speak in this matter, please approach the podium.
No, no. Name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Anteshevich, and I reside at 6541 Southwest 13th Street, which is a couple of houses down the way, right next to the Ludlum apartment buildings. Now, I didn't see the plans and things like that, so the only thing I went by is, you know, that it says the property is Zoned R2 duplex, and applicant is requesting.
Sir, will you bring your mic to a little bit closer to you, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. The property is Zoned R2 duplex, and the applicant is requesting to redevelop the parcel to allow two-family story duplex attached to the existing structure. I was looking at buy this property a couple of years ago, and it was on the web. And they had a price tag of $78,000. And I says, wow, that's pretty cheap. But then I started researching it. And it turns out that West Miami alone had over $100,000 of lien against it, you know, West Miami alone. So then I looked at the property, and the back of the property, there's a huge, what there used to be a porch. Slab, couple of poles, flat roof. No footing, no nothing. So, that porch, what they needed is, they needed additional space, so what they did is they closed it off. No permits, no nothing, it was just closed off. So then I say, okay, I got to tear that down. They're going to make me tear that down? How much is that going to cost me? Then you go to the front of the building. In the front of the building, somehow, they added a five or six-foot foyer. So, the setbacks in that house, from the street to the house, is six feet less than any other house in West Miami. I don't know how they got to it, but, you know, it's there. The other thing, when I read this, it says it's R2 duplex. Surprised the heck out of me, because the only two duplex lots there were my lot and the one in front of me. And those lots are 71 feet wide. Every other lot on that block is only 50 feet wide. Good luck putting four cars next to each other in a 4-foot, in a 50-foot space, you know? The other thing mentioned about parking, that maybe the parking should go deep, and, you know, so one car will go in and the other one behind. Well, that works for a single family. But if you're the first one in, and then you got to get out and there's a car in back with you, eh. So, what I did is, I looked to see what parking spaces they have. And starting on the south side, the first house has two parking spots. Next one has one, next one has one, next one has one, next one has three. The one that's the duplex three, then you go on the north side, side of my house, three parking lots, three parking lots, three parking lots. When you get to this house, there's only one parking lot right now.
Mr. Anteshevich, you're on the wrong property.
The setback shows as 22 feet.
Yeah, you're on the, you're at 6521 13th Street, what you're describing. Because that's the one that has the pool in the back, and the enclosure with the roof.
So, which one are we talking about?
Across the street on the south side.
So, across the street on the south side.
The small house that has the ponceana in front.
The small house that has the ponceana, okay? So, at least we don't have those issues there. But, again, at the end of the day, when you go out there, there's at least seven to eight cars parked in the street. Now, we, the front of the house is what it is. You've got the street, you've got the easement. There's nothing, and everybody parks on the grass. So, at this point in time, you have anywhere from six to eight vehicles parked all along. So, you got to make sure that you have adequate parking spaces. Adequate parking spaces in Florida is 2.28 vehicles per home, house, let's say. So, if you run that off, it should have at least five parking spots. Otherwise, you're just creating more problems. And we already have the problems where if everybody is there, you know, and you have somebody come in, a visitor or something like that, there's no parking spot, and they try to squeeze in into somebody's yard, and then, of course, if you know it, you already had cops going out there, you know, trying to keep the peace. Ludlum Plaza Apartment does not have enough parking space. So, what happens is, some of the overflow comes in and parks there. What else? Adding to the existing structure, being that you're adding more than 33% of the existing structure, that means that you've got to bring the existing structure to code. Bringing it to code, that means you've got to replace all the windows, all the doors. Every corner of the house, you've got to cut the wall 12 inches wide, and put rods from the tie beam to the footing, every corner and every 20 feet. So, you know, if you got to do all that stuff, then you might as well just start it up and start all over again.
Okay, we are familiar with that, sir, and the plans will be submitted to our building department, and any upgrading or meeting code that they have to do to the existing residents portion, including electrical, plumbing, mechanical, the air conditioning system, will be done. And I'm sure the applicant is aware of that and will fully comply with that.
Well, this is just information for you guys, so when you make a decision, you know, that we are having a lot of problem out there with the way things are existing. So, you know, you talked about the green area.
Regarding the parking, I think what the intent of the Board and what Ms. Rio suggested was to minimize the amount of paved area or concrete in the front of the house and have it more of a green area.
Right.
Hence the parking back-to-back along the side.
But is it practical? Because, you know, there is a house that has three parking spaces, and just like she said, but nobody parks on it except one car. Because the first car that goes in, and if you have two cars in back of it, you're screwed. You know, if you want to get out of there. You got to get everybody else to move their car to get out of there. So, yeah, but it's not practical. You can do it, but isn't practical. You know, so you take that into consideration. Because if they're not going to use it like this people, you know, three parking spaces, but only one car goes in there, and everybody else parks in the street, well, this is what's going to happen here.
Okay. Well, thank you much, thank you very much for expressing your concerns.
Yeah, the other thing is, when was the, was that rezoned recently?
No, sir.
No, sir, that's existed since 1967.
Since 1967. I moved in there in 1971, and at that time, we looked at the records, and, you know, it was so surprised to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in this matter? Sir? No? Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Any additional comments from the Board? Are there any motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the following conditions. One would be that the surface area where the cars will park will be grass favors or some sort of green, greener material in addition to, obviously, not removing the large tree in the front, not damaging it by any construction. And maybe study, I don't want to, you know, force them to do it, but study the arrangement of two tandem, you know, one tandem parking space, one behind the other, and then just assign those two parking spaces to either the smaller house or the larger, you know, the new addition. But I want that condition to be a little bit, you know, lenient, because if they figure that they can't work it out, then I don't want to force them to have to come back.
Correct.
Another condition would be that they provide landscape drawings.
For the commission here.
Showing, yes, showing what type of material and irrigation, if there's going to be any, what type of plant material is going to be on the, as well as the material of the parking areas.
Okay.
Okay, those are very good recommendations. Anybody have any additional comments, or a second?
I will check on that motion.
Okay. Mr. Pena, we don't have to read in all the conditions, we already jotted them down.
That's correct.
Okay, on the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez.
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Diana Rio.
Yes.
Alvaro Lurido.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's approved.
Thank you, thank you. We're doing, taking care of whatever you.
Okay.
Correct, you have to come back for the commission hearing on, what date did it say on the paper? July 16th. And then for there, you have to bring the, prior to that, you need to submit the landscape plan and the parking plan. Thank you. Next item on your agenda is Agenda Item Number Two. Property address is 1085 Southwest 67th Avenue. Mo Berger and Anthony Lopez owners. Applicant is requesting a sign permit for an architectural PVC letters for the front elevation of the building This is the old West Miami Tools Building. There's a prior picture in the back of what it looks like today. That's all going to be painted over. And the new style is going to be put up, and if you allow it, the National Plumbing Supply name on the property. The facade is 2,800 square feet, 2,856 square feet, and the sign that they're putting is actually just under 30%.
And Mr. Pena, these going to be electrical or lit signs?
No.
Just letters?
That's correct.
And they're proposing that painting scheme with a blue wave?
That's correct.
I'll tell you, it's a far cry from what's there currently aesthetically. And do they still have allowable square footage for additional signs in the future?
No, the actual sign, square footage allowed on the building is 830 square feet. I mean, 857, and they're putting 830, so there'll be 27 square feet left.
Are they going to be installing the, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are they going to be installing that overhang?
Yeah, the right awning goes in the front.
What material is that awning? I know this is not part of this application, right?
No.
The awning is not.
Go ahead. State your name and address, sir.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Lopez, and the address is 1085 Southwest 67th Avenue. It's a waterproof canvas.
So, it's a canvas?
Yes. It's a high grade.
I thought it was going to be a faux painting to look like. I didn't know it was going to be an awning. At first, I thought it was, and I said, nah, it's going to be paint.
No, no, it's an awning. We want to make it attractive, take away from what it is right now and make it attractive for the community. So, we really want to make it aesthetically nice to the eye and for the community, so.
Okay. Mr. Pena, an awning doesn't require Board approval, correct?
No, that's part of the building permit.
Okay, but it will require building permit with?
With us.
The building department?
That's on a separate permit.
Okay.
But awning, you're proposing with the, with that ondulating shape, correct?
The paint?
We're not going to see it two months from now, straight.
Yes. The awning is going to be also the same shape.
Okay, good.
We're trying to mimic like a wave. And the building will be painted as you see it there. I just wanted to give you a.
Is this the intensity of the blues that you're proposing? Or this is just for rendering, for just for showing us?
That was for rendering. We went up with color wheel numbers that are provided by the. That was for rendering. We went up, uh, with the color wheel numbers that are provided by the, um, building department, so we chose, um, the number.
Something from the approved chart that the city has?
And what I did is, the letters, the PVC letters are gonna be painted the same approved color, so everything is match. So, all the colors are, I don't want, one, one color blue on top, on the bottom, everything is gonna be exactly the same, because the company making the letters, I send them the requirements of that color that I needed, because I wanna make it match. I really like, I'm very...
Okay, good. I'm glad to have somebody picky also in this. The letters are shown on this rendering, uh, with a shadow, which means that they're detached somehow from the wall. Is that so, or is this just something used on the rendering? Are the, the letters going to be like an inch away from the wall, or are they gonna be attached directly onto the wall?
There will be a gap between the wall and the actual letters. Could be, um, three-quarters of an inch, half an inch, maybe no more than an inch, because then that, I, I don't like that.
And these are not illuminated?
No. Eventually, in the future, uh, we are gonna put some lighting.
And direct lighting from the building.
Right. But that's not at this moment or anything right now.
But these letters are not illuminated?
They're not.
And the little drop of, of water is not illuminated either?
The drop, no. But I do have to make a comment. I believe that I gave you only one drop. It's supposed to be three drops.
Right.
One drawing has the three drops.
Okay, so, it's supposed to be the three drops, because it's supposed to create the effect that when the drops fall, it's press the water out.
Are the drops, um, um, gonna be paint or also part of the same material as the sign?
Uh, the drops are going to be same material PVC, but what I wanna do is, uh, I forget what they call it, um, what they do, a wrap. I just want it to be, that looks like a real drop of water, so...
So, it has like a film on it?
It will be a film on the three drops, so it will be mimicking a water drop.
Okay.
Um, any proposals for changing the doors and the bars that are on the doors right now?
Eventually, there will be. Right now is, uh, dollar constraints, so we're trying to do so much. And, uh, but in the future, I do not like the doors myself. That's the first thing my wife said, those doors, gotta go. So, which I am, I'm in agreement. It's just right now, uh, I, I don't have the money to do, make everything. If, if I do find it, I will come back to, I don't know if I need to come back to you, but I definitely go back to the building department, so that I get approved for replacing those doors. I do not like the bars myself, a, at all.
Maybe when we tear down my building, I'll give you my front, uh, impact glass.
Right.
My front door is impact, so I'll give it to you.
Okay, we can do that.
We'll start with one door at a time.
But I do wanna change them. I wanna make it so when my clients come, they wanna come. I wanna make them, I wanna make it appealing, and I wanna make it so that it's, it's different than anybody else.
No, it definitely, and, and I commend you for trying to do this to the building, which this is completely, this is basically a completely different building from what we have there now.
Yes, it is.
And it's definitely a lot more inviting, and it's something that we definitely want in the, in the neighborhood.
We, we really wanna work hard on it, make it, and eventually, more things will be done to it.
Okay, any further comments from the board?
But you'll have three drops, okay? Can you approve three drops?
We got plenty of water here.
Yeah.
No more comments? Anybody wanna make a motion for or against?
I make a motion approved.
Okay, on the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alberto Lurido? Diana Rio?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, it's approved.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, sir.
Uh, last item on your, uh, agenda tonight is the, uh, agenda item number three, which is the review of the proposed ordinance amending section four point three, which is C use districts, and four point four of zoning ordinance two eighty-two. Uh, tonight, I just, uh, provided you copies with it, so you could go over it. Uh, this is what's allowed currently under our commercial area. Uh, this is, I think the last time this was changed was back in nineteen eighty-seven. And, uh, you may want to eliminate some of the permitted uses. Automatic permitted means they could come in tomorrow and ask my office that they wanna, uh, put one of these businesses there, and they, they don't have to come to the zoning board, they don't have to apply for any special use permits. So, some time ago, way back in the eighties, we went through this, and I'm sure Mr. Lourida remembers that, and eliminated a bunch that were permitted way before, that this list was a lot longer. So, go through it, uh, think of, uh, this, you know, the businesses that we have there, the, the buildings that we have there now, and what kind of, uh, you know, the number sixty, rug and carpet sales, retail sales. I don't think anybody wants a, somebody rolls of carpet on, uh, Sixty-seventh or Eighth Street. So, go through them and, and cross out what you think, uh, read the rest of it, which, uh, goes into landscaping on, on properties and stuff like that. And, uh, on the next meeting, we'll come back and change, uh, propose some of the changes that way, with the proposed changes that we did on the, on the previous ones. We'll have a new zoning ordinance by the time we finish going through all the different sections that are left.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments from the board? Okay, the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of June twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen is now adjourned. It is eight ten PM for the record.
Thank you.